Call to order this meeting, the Carthage City Council, Tuesday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty five. Chief Martin, would you please give us indication?
Yes, Father. Heavenly Father, we gather here tonight, we thank you for our health and our ability to be here. We ask your blessing and comfort for those who may be suffering or in need. Father, please examine our hearts tonight and fill us with your wisdom, so the fruit of our efforts can bring glory to you and you alone in Jesus' name, my prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on the border, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, we now call the roll.
Peterson, Gilton, here, West.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
Thorne.
Here.
Kang.
Can't hear.
Snow.
Here.
Shram.
Here.
Wells.
Here.
I know you've had an opportunity to read the minutes from the last session. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of August twenty twenty six, August twenty six, two thousand and twenty five.
I make, I make motion, we approve the August twenty six minutes as presented in the packet.
Thank you. I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve the minutes of August twenty twenty six. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Next thing we, on the agenda will be the, the oath of office for our new Ward Two council member. So, Gennaro, if you'd please come forward. And Amy, I'd ask you to administer the oath. Would you like your wife and your family to join you? That's certainly all right?
That's fine.
Okay. And if you got a phone that you want Tracy to take a picture with, I'm sure she'll be happy to do that, too.
It's true. Okay, may I do that again? I state your name.
I, Gennaro S. Francis.
solemnly swear that I possess all the qualifications prescribed by law.
solemnly swear upon all the.
that I possess all the qualifications.
possess all qualifications.
prescribed by law.
prescribed by law.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and of the State of Missouri.
and the State of Missouri.
the provisions of the city charter.
the provision of the city charter.
and ordinance of the city of Carthage.
the ordinance of the city of Carthage.
and faithfully maintain myself in office.
and faithfully maintain myself in office.
and well and truly perform the duties.
well and.
well and truly.
and truly perform the duties.
of the office of city council member.
of the office of city council member.
within and for said city.
within and for said city.
to the best of my skill and.
to the best of my skill and abilities.
It's your chance, I mean.
Have you already got him set up? Amy, ask him.
Um, he does not have.
Okay, all right. All right, we'll now have a presentation. Understand? Jeff Meredith?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council, members of the audience, as well as those watching on the TV. Again, I am Jeff Meredith with the Carthage Economic Development Corporation. While I meet with the city staff regularly, as well as some of you elected individuals at various meetings, I do try and provide quarterly updates, so I just want to kind of chat about a couple items on the agenda tonight, as well as some of the things that the Carthage Economic Development Corporation has been working on. First off, on the agenda tonight is Council Bill twenty five sixty two. This is talking about a water delineation study. It's just one of the steps in the development of the process for the land out there by the hospital that the city owns. The process will ultimately determine if there are jurisdictional waters or waters of the United States out there, and then what that will impact will be, and if we have to mitigate those or kind of some of the impacts of that. There were four bids received. The tariff foundation was the lowest, and I know that that's going to be presenting later on on the agenda this evening. As far as the land out there, the billboard is up. I am planning a tour of the land with the Carthage Economic Development Corporation Board later this month, trying to kind of get out there in between harvests, because they did have corn out there, and then they will follow with wheat. So just kind of beat the cycles. The other thing, we do have Council Bill twenty five sixty four on there. I know that I believe Miss Shram had shared that on Facebook as well, which is modifying chapter seventeen, article seven, section seventeen, two fifty seven. This is based upon the Carthage three fifty three court. Ultimately, that is a tool, and the reason for that is upon the advice of legal counsel, specifically Gilmore and Bell, to match the current state law requirements. I do believe Mr. Gold has obviously signed off on that prior to you guys seeing it this evening as well. We've had a couple of projects that have been looking at that three fifty three abatement tool, so that's what brought it up to make sure that that tool is currently correct and available should we decide to use that. And if those projects come in front of you, you will obviously know more about that as that occurs. We didn't have the housing study complete. We've got a committee, got a committee meeting tomorrow, looking at some of the various challenges. We'll have a couple of members of city staff present in the morning to talk about some things that are impacting Carthage housing. And just kind of how to address some of those. Had a hotel study done, currently commuting, communicating with a variety of brands to see if any of them have an interest in our market for a new hotel property. And then childcare, this is for those here as well as those watching. There is a grant available. If anyone's looking to start a new childcare facility in the state of Missouri, not existing, there's a deadline of June thirtieth. I'm happy to help with that grant. We used that for a different facility, and they got over a hundred grand based upon their size of their needs being met. We've also got a retail committee, so we've met a couple of times, talked about some retail needs and targets, and then just identified some of the areas that we could potentially see some growth. Limited service eating restaurants is something that obviously has been brought up, which is basically like a fast food situation, identifying what might be best for the market, and then, you know, locations and things such as that. So really, that's basically my notes. If you do have questions about any of these things, specifically those two council bills that I can't answer, please let me know now, because I plan to go home and have to. And then watch you on TV.
Any council member have any questions for Jeff?
Jeff, I, Beth Kang, I do have a question. Just on the childcare facilities, who are you reaching out to, or are you getting interest from?
Well, trying to get interest from really anyone who has interest. Now, I am speaking with someone who has a fairly strong interest on this. We've looked at a couple of buildings. And then she's also considering setting up a nonprofit for the nonprofit business model for that facility. So if that does occur, I'll help walk her through the nonprofit. But mostly kind of part of the reason for tonight is to throw it out there, because I don't know everyone in town. And some of those, I mean, there are grants for those of less than ten childcare openings.
Like for family daycare? Okay.
As long as it's a licensed facility, yes, because there are some unlicensed, of course. But yeah, so there are certainly options for that, and really, I, you don't, nobody wants me running a childcare, although I've stopped, started calling the childcare places versus, you know, units versus widgets, as I've been told is not right. Anyway. So basically, there are things, and I've kind of learned about the budgeting process, and we actually do have a consultant that we have paid that could work with someone interested in a childcare facility, but before we use the consultant's time, we would sit down and chat to make sure that.
Screening.
Yes, absolutely. So really, anyone who has an interest, definitely, if you know someone, please let's talk. Just trying to address that challenge, because it is a huge problem for Carthage, as well as the state overall, so.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I just wanted to say you were here last night in Budget and Ways, and we asked a lot of questions about how chapter seventeen related into Missouri three fifty three, and Jeff answered quite a few questions for us. So we're pretty clear on why that's on the agenda tonight. So that's why you're not seeing any questions today.
Okay, cool. And I'd just like to mention, okay, thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right, we'll now move on to public comments. Anyone wishing to address the council, please step the podium, state your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Yes, my name is Gene W. Griffith. I live in ten fifty James here in Carthage. I wish, I wish to address the council on water issues. It is no coincidence that Missouri American Water over in Joplin are thinking about building a huge reservoir to hold tens of thousands of gallons of water. This is, this quite frankly is not an issue right now, but it, it could be an issue in the future. I'm currently writing a book on the environment. And there, there are signs everywhere you look. USA Today, for example, I don't have a, I don't have a PowerPoint presentation, but USA Today, Mississippi River Water Loss Plumbing for Second Year, make that three years. The article was, was published back in, in two thousand and twenty three. Camille Fine, there are pictures, photographic evidence. Recently, back in April, USA Today, a mainstream, moderate publication, not, not radical left or right, published another article that the Mississippi River, our Appian Way, is endangered because of climate change, because of pollution, because of mismanagement. The governor of state of Missouri, Nebraska, and Iowa, the current head of the Department of Homeland Security, they met and discussed this issue. The fact of the matter is, I guarantee you, when they met, the word conservation did not come up. But I, I want to be like Paul Revere and warn the council and warn Mayor Flanagan that this is an issue that we will have to deal with in the future, because Carthage is growing in leaps and bounds. There are three areas that I would quite recommend focusing on. Number one, building permits. Building permits. Number two, unnecessary usage, such as car washes, such as below ground pools, and I'm not talking about those little waiting pools the children wait in in the summertime in the, in the, in the extreme heat. I'm talking about, you know, below ground facilities, okay? That literally hold thousands of gallons. And here's the beauty of this, it's not going to cost this body one dime to create a, to create a committee to formulate a comprehensive water policy. And that's all I have to say. I don't want to use more than five minutes, because you're, I don't want to use more of your valuable time, but this is a, this is a, an issue that if you don't deal with it, nature will dictate terms eventually. And that is something we don't want to have. Do I make myself clear? Have a great day.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Perkins, you got a question for it?
Is there video of the presentation that was given?
USA Today?
No, 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 no. In this committee with C D E P, is there a video of a presentation by Roddy, who's a member of the.
Don't know.
Well, you should look at it, because your, what your, your comments are very appropriate, however, it's being addressed.
Well, that's good.
It has been addressed and will be addressed, so I, I encourage you, if you can find the video to look at.
The video is on YouTube.
Okay, just check it out.
Okay, I will.
Okay.
You know, I, I, I mean, I commend the governors of Missouri, Iowa, and Nebraska, quite frankly, for bringing the issue up, meeting in a, you know, a conference on it, but you know what, the word commerce, the word conservation didn't come up, okay, I guarantee you, not with those three. Um, you know, this is an issue that, that quite frankly is going to come back to bite us if we're not careful, and I don't want to see that happen. I, I like to take a shower. I like to drink Carthage water. And I, I'll check out the video.
Please do.
But, you know, Missouri American Water, it's no coincidence, they're building, they're going to build a huge reservoir, at least they hope to, with the council's approval over there. I thought about taking my message to them, but, you know, you don't want to rankle people, make people upset, you know, uh, you know. I'd rather be like Paul Revere. I'm, I'm not, you know, I'm not Lenin, you know. I'd rather be like Paul Revere, I'm not, you know, I'm not Lenin, you know? So have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
And you betcha. You have a great day.
I was not prepared to come here tonight. My name's Georgia Ann Dean, I live at 1321 Hazel. If we are going to have these contractors in our, in our city, I want our gas lines fixed, I don't want nobody's house blowing up. But they need to leave our property in that way they found it. This morning, white dump truck goes down Hazel, knocks my mailbox off. I called Regina, she told me to take the, file a police report. I didn't. This afternoon, I walk out in my backyard, because I've been gone for a few days. My fence is all stretched out, one of my poles is over, where they dug a hole in my backyard and tore up my fence. So I called the gas company, and they told me, well, I could file a claim with them, and then they're going to have to turn it over to Mears, and blah, blah, blah. I'm on a fixed income. I, I mean, I know it's minor damage, but I don't need to be going and buying myself a new mailbox, having my son come fix my fence and stretch it all out so my granddog don't get out. I think if you show up at my property and do the work, and I'm a renter from Ray Mathis, I would like my property left in the same condition when you leave. And I would like for you to pick up your water bottles and your trash that you throw out in my alley along my fence. That's all I'm asking. Another, another thing while I'm up here, is I owe Jack Perkins an apology. I do not live in Ward 3. This man tried to tell me this. I voted in Ward 3 twice, because I got to, because when you guys rezoned them, you put me to voting where my mailbox is, not where I live. So I had to, I couldn't figure it out. I called my daughter in Kansas City, or in Jefferson City, she works for the state, so she got on the state's computer, and she said, Mom, your mailbox is in Ward 3, I think, but I think you lived it. So Jack and Ronnie figured it out, that I was voting for my mailbox, but not where I sleep. According to Charlie Davis, we are supposed to vote where we sleep. He changed me back to Ward 5, but the last two elections, I voted in the wrong ward. And, well, he won by seven votes. How many people, I mean, I voted for Jack, but how many people on my street with the mailbox in the wrong side of the street? Makes a big difference when we got elections going on by seven votes. So somebody needs to make sure every, because my neighbor lady, she still votes in Ward 3, but she still sleeps in Ward 5.
I'm sorry, I can give your address to my neighbor?
1321 Hazel. And I've already spoke to the mayor, and I've already spoke to Jack, and I've already spoke to Ronnie. And Ronnie and Jack went all out to fix this one.
And you'll have the good gracious to tell everyone, I was very pleasant.
He was. I wasn't so pleasant to him, though. I told him to shut up and listen to me. I know, but I voted. And I wasn't pleasant to the man, and I owe you a vote. But I knew I voted in Ward 3, and I just couldn't figure it out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the council?
Hi, my name is Eileen Sherlock, and I'm the executive director for the Carthage Crisis Center. And I have a staff member, that's Nicholas Carter. And thank you, members, for allowing us to be able to speak. I just wanted to take this opportunity to let everybody know that at the Carthage Crisis Center, we are looking for collaboration with everybody in the community, where we're serving the most vulnerable people in the community, and we want to partner together with everybody. We're looking to hold everybody in the building accountable. We've increased our, there has been some, some movement in the building where we have asked residents to move out, because we are holding them accountable. We've brought the GED program in-house on Fridays, so everybody that comes through the Carthage Crisis Center will have the opportunity to complete their GED program. We just had the economic security come in and teach a 15-hour class on how to have a resume interview, hold down a job, that every month, they'll be following up with them, that they actually remain employed. We're trying to look at solutions on helping them remain out of a homeless situation, and we just wanted to introduce her, you know, ourselves, and kind of let you know that although there's a lot of movement where people may be being asked to move on to other programs that they can comply with better, the Carthage Crisis Center is committed to collaborate with everybody in the community. So we're just looking to just announce that as the new executive director, we'll move for collaborations, partnerships, how we can help. We write grants, so if you have anybody in the community that needs help writing grants, that's a low-income, in need-based program, we can help them write grants and whatever else we can, you know, partner with in the community. And then Nicholas will have a fit in his desk.
Yeah, my name's Nicholas Carter. I started out at the Carthage Crisis Center as a resident, and was promoted to staff. The Carthage Crisis Center is so much more than a homeless shelter, they offer hope and healing through any crisis that people are going through, just by showing everybody, people how to work through, you know, scripture and, and the Bible. It's just a very beautiful place, and if any members of council needs help with anything, or would like to, you can come by and tour the facility, please, please. And that's about all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. So Eileen?
Yes.
Up here. You're, you're new, are you new to the community? I mean, where, where are, where do you come to?
I'm coming from Flatstaff, Arizona, originally New York. My brother lives here in Carthage for 27 years, and I've always visited the family. So when my mom passed, I decided to come back to family, although not in New York, to Carthage. So yes, I'm very close with the mise en vue.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say, my wife uses your facility quite often.
Thank you.
With, it's just phenomenal. The help, the people that work, want to work, and do a great job.
You know, we couldn't do what we do without the help of volunteers and community, community support, donors, and everybody that's partnering with us, so I appreciate the support. We have 40 residents right now, so we're completely full, and we have women and children, so men, women, and children in the building, so I appreciate everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council? All right, then we will move on now to reports to standing committees. First one, Budget Ways and Means. Helen?
Thank you, Mayor. Budget Ways and Means Committee met last night here in council chambers. We had a few items on the agenda, some of the items that you'll be seeing. We discussed the budget adjustment for the 2425 fiscal year for the fire sales tax fund to fund the new fire truck. That's on the agenda tonight, Council Bill 2563 under new business. Second, we discussed the taxi grant application, that they have changed some of the rules on the staffing and the way, the operations of the taxi. So we have increased our taxi grant application this year, I believe it's 160,000 that we're asking for. Normally, it's in the neighborhood of 140, or 120,000 that we request. That's on the agenda tonight in Council Bill 2561. Lastly, we discussed the changes to Chapter 17, Article 7, relating to the Carthage Redevelopment Corporation that Mr. Meredith spoke about earlier. That's on the agenda tonight, Council Bill 2564. And there are two main changes in that language of that ordinance that we're changing. One of them is, under Section 2, we're putting in a, the wording that says not less than 15 days before a public hearing to consider a redevelopment plan. There has to be a public hearing, and we have to invite all the, all the stakeholders, which is all the taxing districts that would be affected by that. Chapter 353 grant from the state. The other one is, under Section 3B, a statement that all interested persons in all political subdivisions will have the opportunity to be heard on such grant of tax abatement or exemption. So those are the two main changes to that language. It's not changing anything else. As Mr. Meredith said, when, when the attorney with Gilmore Bell was looking at that, because there are a couple people possibly going to be using that, they had some concerns that that language wasn't in our ordinance, and so just to comply with that, we got that change. Other than that, we discussed some changes over the last couple of years in both our revenues and expenses. So the last couple of years, we've had some extraordinary income, which in turn created extraordinary expenses. So if you look back over the last few years, 2023 budget, I believe it was, we budgeted and spent over $15 million. Some of that money was from the ARPA funds that we received from the federal government, some of that was from the $5 million that we received from McKeon Brooks Foundation in the parks. So as you see, this year that we're currently in, we're only budgeting somewhere in the neighborhood of 13,8 million. And so it's not that we've cut spending, it's that we've lost revenue, because that revenue was, again, extraordinary, because it was a one-time thing, and it's not recurring. So that's what you'll see if you look at our revenues and expenses over the years. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is October 13th at 5:30 here in council chambers. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Committee on Insurance Audit and Claims, Ron?
Yes, this evening, we met earlier 5:30. It was a short meeting. We reviewed the claims and approved them, and we will later in the meeting, put those for the council for approval.
Thank you.
That was it, Your Mayor.
Okay. Public Safety, Helen?
Yes, Public Safety is currently between meetings, and our regularly scheduled monthly meeting would be next Monday, but due to some of us being out of town for the MML conference, we have rescheduled that meeting to September 22nd, which would be the fourth Monday here in council chambers at 5:30. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Public Services, Janet?
We are between meetings, but today we had a tourism meeting to discuss the DMO dollars with our advisory committee, which some of the people consist of CWP, McKeon Brooks Foundation, CEDC, YMCA, and Vision Carthage, along with other annuity, other nonprofits in the city, that we want to collaborate with to make sure that the DMO dollars, which is Destination Marketing Organization dollars from the state, that we use those dollars in the most effective way. We also, let's see, so Melissa's putting together a plan for that to submit to the mayor. And the Last Food Truck Friday is this Friday, and it's going to be 93 degrees, partly cloudy, no rain, so go to that. And the next meeting is delayed a little bit because of the MML conference and attendance, it will be September 18th. That's the third Thursday. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Public Works, Ron?
First, Mayor, I got to back up on the claims. There's a couple things, notes that Derek wanted me to report on that I missed out. In our packets tonight on Council Bill 2544 is language reference, the employee, and then also in Council Bill 2560 is approval proposal language drafting for Council Bill approving the council's agenda on the whistleblower policy. One is the employees' record policy, and the other one's on the whistleblower policy. Now, for Public Works, Derek has been very extensive here, note, reference the HH Chapel Road Sidewalk Project, and if I misquote, let me know, yes, I have. Due to prior two lower bids on the project being non-compliant with permitting, permits and discussions had been whether to accept the highest bid, Hessling's Construction, who is doing the square sidewalk, or to rebid out to the project due to some concerns with Hessling. The Public Works voted to rebid the project, which will be posted for later, for at least 90 days. And that's, some discussion was made there, and we finally decided it would be best if we rebided that out. For water wasteland study, it's also in Council Bill 2562 tonight, a standard study done to assess groundwater displacement and saturating of the EDP. Four bids were presented. Environmental Works for 6,500. Cattails Environmental wanted 7,061.50, and Olson's wanted $21,000 to do the project. Tara Foundation came in at the low bid of 5,500, and that is who we recommended to go forward with that bid. Also, Public Works Department, due to increase their cost on necessary manpower with proposal, increase the price, a change for 2436 copy size for projects. This is where contractors come in and want additional notes or papers or what have you, and they've been giving them a break on that, and the, we voted to allow them to increase the cost from $3 up to $3.50 for black and white, and up to $4 for color. Staff report from Tracy, the downtown square sidewalk project should be completed by end of this next week. That still?
They are.
Okay. And the East Chestnut Street culvert replacement is going well and on time, and Hessel Street Airport Drive, street widening, Hazel is done with the concrete, only asphalt remaining remains. After that, Hazel will be completed and open for traffic, then moving to Airport Drive. And that's all I have on the Public Works, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll now move on, move on to reports of special committees and board liaisons. Anyone have something to report? David?
The library board met this evening. Sorry, I've got allergies, can't really talk. They had a very busy summer, August, they set, kind of reset the library clean. The roof repairs that was ongoing, it's been completed, that cost them about $12,000 to have the roof repairs done. They're having to have the door, entry doors and the vestibule redone and replaced. They're looking at the first two weeks of November, the library will actually have to be closed while they do that. The other big thing they have coming up is the parking lot is in need of repairs, and they have determined it's going to be best to have it ground down and re-asphalated. Bellevents will be doing that, but they can work into their schedule. They do have a locked-in price, so it may even be spring before that gets done, and that will require the library to maybe be closed for a day or two while that goes on as well. They, they're working on a lot of projects, they got a calendar ready for October. They have a lot of things for the community that I think a lot of people aren't aware of, but there's stuff going on for adults and children throughout the month, and that's my whole report.
Okay, thank you. Helen?
Mr. Mayor, I have a point of order.
Okay.
When Mr. Wells' report, does he, do we need a motion and a vote by the entire council to accept the bid for the water delineation study?
Yes, good, good point. I will entertain a motion.
I make that motion.
Have a motion and a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
It's actually going to be presented in Council Bill 2562 this evening.
That's what I thought.
Okay. Oh, yeah, okay. Didn't realize that was in there.
I take my motion.
Well, we can vote again. All right. Any other special committee or board liaison reports? Janet?
Vision Carthage, they are having a dumpster day on October 4th. It's going to be at the Fair Acres Sports Complex from 9 till 12. The Area M Waste Management for the state of Missouri is going to sponsor half the cost of the tire recycling, so that was a good bump in, in their donations. I attended the Fall Garden Workshop, and it was presented by Wildcat Glades and Missouri Master Naturalist. It was very interesting, it was October, or August 25th. The Next Restoration Carthage Workshop will be September 24th from 5:30 to 6:30. It's a recycling workshop, and it's at the Ste- It's a recycling workshop and it's at the Steadly Family Legacy Center and it's to learn more about recycling in our town. I also attended the the planning and zoning and there's going to be a special meeting on the 24th to discuss the new guidelines for the historical district and the design features. Right now, we have a draft from the company that are consultants for this. So on the 24th, right here in Council Chambers, there'll be a chance for people to discuss what those guidelines are before it gets set and goes on to be permanent guidelines for our historical district. I also attended the Harriet S. Truman TAC meeting, which is the Transportation Advisory. And that was yesterday. And the main thing from that was on Chapel Road, which interests us, the intersection of HH and Chapel Road. That may have gotten moved down a little bit in the priority list, so we just need to get back on their radar to keep that as a focus because it's such a dangerous intersection for our parents and students there. They have a meeting in about a month to go over the new priorities and if there's any money left from the step. So hopefully it will go to that. And I think that's it for now, thank you.
Okay. Ron?
Now, is that the same plan in zoning, historical participation?
Yeah, did you have that on? You can read that.
Yeah, he's got, Derek had some comments he wanted to be presented. Number one, they met first Monday of each month, but the commission voted to add a second meeting on the third Thursday of each month through February of 2026 in the interest of working through current projects. Second, the planning zoning, they drafted a new ordinance to revise the update, the current in city code, however, discussion of that was postponed until January 2026. And he also asked to, the Walker Collaboration will be in town and host a public forum regarding the draft design guidelines on the evening of September the 24th. Council members strongly encouraged to attend. General discussion of the draft design guidelines, expense impact on current property owners, implementation changes with current city code and whether to adopt all the proposed guidelines. The best explanation will be from the Walker Collaboration on the 24th. That's all.
Thank you. Any other reports from board liaison or special committee? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll now move on to my report. Last couple of weeks, we've been primarily busy here in numerous meetings and interviews with the various hiring committees we've got going on. All that's continuing on track, I think. The chambers had a couple of different entity or operations lately. Those of you that didn't get a chance to see, they did their after-hours social last week or the week before at the Palms. And during that, they opened up the downstairs, which includes the, the original void that they uncovered when they redid the sidewalks. And it's pretty interesting, if you haven't been down there, Doug Osborne, who owns the building, they decided to just have it covered so that it's still available for access from underneath. And if you haven't seen it, I think it's, it's worth your time. Chambers also held two coffees since last time we met, one of them out at the YMCA and, and one at the Roundabout Laundromat, both of which were very successful. I did get an opportunity to attend the tree board meeting last week. And the biggest conversation piece there is there is a, the Missouri Department of Natural Resources has identified the Emerald Ash Bore, which is an insect which infects some trees throughout Carthage and will have significant impact on our golf course, our other parks and the Kellogg Lake. And they're trying to work through now, generally the, the, the way that the DNR wants to approach it is they have to remove the tree, even if it's not infected yet, because they're sure it's going to be infected, and then replace it with two saplings or seedlings. So the tree board is currently working through to find out what the way ahead should look like for the city of Carthage and obviously the parks and Kellogg as well, to sort through what the impacts are going to be. So more to follow on that. I did field a call last week for about an hour with the representation, representatives rather, from the National Coalition Against Bigger Trucks. And this is a nationwide effort that is representing smaller communities and trying to slow down some of the federal adoption of, of rules, regulations subsequently adopted by states, which would allow larger trucks on our roads, both on the interstates, of course, and then potentially local roads as well. So that, that, it was a very interesting conversation, nothing that we need to do about right now. And as they reported, Missouri currently doesn't have any activity and route that they're, they're considering from that perspective, but we'll obviously keep an eye on it. Finally, we did meet this morning with the, the contractor and Josiah, who of the, who has the, the planning phase for the next effort towards sidewalk rejuvenation. And this is across essentially outside the square, about a block out, going down to Central, over to Howard and west to about, well, maybe Garrison, we shall see. So, and that probably won't occur for a while. We made a point of emphasizing to them that we would like to improve the communication and the sharing of information and plans further in advance with not only those businesses that may or may not be affected, but with the, the public at large. So when that comes to fruition, we'll move in that direction. I did have an opportunity last Fri, last Saturday, rather, to attend the VFW hosted celebration of Patriot Day. It was supported by both our fire department and our police department and they had a pretty good turnout out there. Ron, or I'm sorry, David saw you out there. So that was, that was well done. As everybody knows, Patriot Day is later on this week. So finally, in response to a lot of different comments from citizens, and I know some of you have reported the same comments, Ron Wells has agreed to head up a committee for us, which is going to focus on code and ordinance enforcement. And it will include representatives from the fire department, the police department, the public works department and our own municipal legal department, so that we make sure we're doing everything right. And Ron has agreed to take that on and lead that fight for us. Because a lot of people have complaints about ordinance and codes not being enforced in yards and that sort of thing, kind of cleaning up and that sort of approach for it. So we will, we will work through that going forward and I'm sure Ron will be reaching out to talk to you. So that completes my report for this evening. So now we'll move on to reports of council and Jack, we'll start with you.
I don't have a lot to report on. Word three, I do have a question regarding the ash trees. Do we sell those logs?
Do we sell them?
Yeah.
I have no idea.
Do you know, Tracy?
It's part of the contract that they are removed. We have to have everything removed.
I understand that, but, but are they paying us to take them out because, no? Okay. Make a lot of baseball bats with those ash trees. But I, I don't, I don't have anything.
Okay, David?
Nothing this evening.
All right. Beth?
I don't have anything this evening right now, thank you.
Alan?
I just want to welcome Gennaro and I'll reserve the, my rest of my time for later tonight at the final comments.
Okay. Janet?
Welcome too. I stopped by the chamber today and got their poster for the events for Maple Leaf. They start in 31 days. There's lots of events on here, so hopefully everybody can find one or two that they can attend and let us know how it is, but get ready, it's coming. And you can pick up a poster there too, to display in your business, just like this. That's it.
Ron?
Yeah, I got an opportunity to go down and spend some time with Josiah this week. I want to continue to try and get around to different departments and make sure I get a, a good relationship and an understanding of what's going on. Of course, we still got to get some department heads back in line so that, got somebody to go to. But we had a very good lengthy conversation, about over an hour and also in reference our committee. We'll be getting together after we get back from MML and try and get that on board and get to work on the codes. I have been looking up on the codes and for the citizens, for me alone, it's a job just to try and get into the computer and dig up the information of what the codes are and what you're, as a citizen, responsible for doing and not doing in your upkeep on your property. So I want to look at it a way that we can try and make it easier for the public to know what they're actually supposed to be responsible for when we get into that committee. And that's all, Your Honor.
Thank you. Kate?
I think liaison to the Humane Society and I don't think they want us involved. I think, isn't the city, when you talk to them?
Well, we have sent them a, a letter, we have not responded, heard back, have we, John?
No.
Yeah.
Well, I feel like they really don't want to work with us. They don't know what we do with our animals in the meat, John.
Yeah, it's a problem.
Can, will Joplin take them?
They will take a few, as I understand it, on a case-by-case basis.
So how, how to solve this problem? I hope you guys come up with something that we can load on soon. That's all.
Okay. Gennaro?
Not at the moment, I just want to, well, say thank you to everybody. I'll try to do my best of my ability to be a good council member. If I do something, you guys can help me out and say, hey, this is not how you do it. I'm open to be a good council member and be a good person throughout Carthage.
Thank you. Ray?
I just want to say welcome to Gennaro also, and I really don't have anything else this evening. Thank you for your time.
All right, we'll move on to administrative reports. Chief Hawkins?
Just a couple of things. First of all, welcome and look forward to getting to know you and working with you. And on that same type of note, our treading lieutenant, we've instructed him to start working on the next Citizens Police Academy. I would encourage all council, of course, if everyone signs up, that might fill the pluses. But it will cover all aspects, majority of the aspects of the different types of things that we do at the police department. You can do everything from ride-alongs to some time at the range, to why we collect ourselves in the manner that we do. It's very informative. The instructors will vary from department. Trevor Hall will probably give a class on investigations and so on and so forth. It's very enlightening and we've had a long time since we've done one of these, so I strongly encourage anyone, especially council, to, if you've never seen something like that, please participate. We've also, we had a reception today, retirement reception for Troy Richards. He is, last official date is tomorrow, but today was his actual last working day. So we're down, will be down an officer there. Hate to see Troy go, he was an asset to this department and to this city. And I think that's all for tonight.
Thank you.
Chief Hawkins, what are the dates for the police academy?
Official dates haven't been set yet, but it should be, my guess would be sometime in October.
Okay, thank you.
Tomorrow, we will be participating in a senior prom at Maple Leaf Harris. We got a request from them to bring some guys out and I think they, they're going to print tickets and they're going to decorate it up like a gym and the whole nine yards. So from 1 to 3, that's what we'll be responding from there if we have a call. Friday, we have a grain bin rescue training from 8 to 12. If anybody wants to come and observe that, it'll be a station one. We've had two major fires in the last five days and I want to thank all the mutual aid departments that assisted us. We got help from Dunaway, Circoxie, Jasper, Villa, Carterville, Orinoco, Tri-Cities and Carl Junction. Had a big one out on Cafer, we were out there about seven hours in the evening, in the three hours. And then we had one at 6:00 AM this morning, there was a pretty big fire, we need a water shovel on that one as well, it was out in county. But want to thank my guys for the effort they put forth, nobody got hurt. Not successful outcomes for the property owners, but they were pretty much fully involved when we got there. They're metal buildings, so it's, it's too dangerous to hit them. So we had to protect exposures and tried to figure out what caused them again, so. We got some to add tonight.
Okay. Josiah?
Yeah, so just to update, the square project is completed as far as the contractors obligations. There were some changes that we had to make throughout the course of that project. We've seen that we could save some money by doing the remainder of the project ourselves with city staff. Placement of a few of the signs, we wanted to make sure all the signs looked uniform. There were some special signposts that we had coming that we're waiting on and as soon as they're in place, we'll see the rest of the signage go up. Road widening on Hazel Street, that asphalt is actually going to be scheduled for Monday. So Monday, and they're hoping to get it all done in one day. So if they can be there Monday, then we should see Hazel opened up possibly as early as next week if we can get some of the sign, striping and stuff in place as well. So we, looking good there. Airport Drive, we're still waiting on Spire Two, finish the gas line movement on Airport Drive before we can go fully back on Airport Drive. East Chestnut Box Culvert, we did have some help with Carthage Water Electric on that. The water crew came out, we discovered that the water line was actually a little bit too close to the concrete, to the flow line. So we had to make an adjustment in that project. Those guys came out, assessed the situation, worked with us. Were in the next day and completely had the line moved for us. So thanks for those guys for making that, speeding that process up so the contractors aren't held up there. But that's all I have tonight.
Josiah, can we ask a question? Did we get those cracks that was in the concrete around the square taken care of?
Yes, yeah, they, they re-poured those at the end of last week.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Tracy?
Thank you. We had an eternal meeting to discuss the new mandates issued by the state regarding the taxi program and the effects that they will have on our budget. They are now requiring us to have a full-time dispatcher. There are times throughout the month that the call volume is too much for current dispatching staff to handle the, all of the calls, so that creates an issue. They've also increased training mandates for staff along with, you know, the, the drivers as well. I attended a design team meeting with Vision Carthage where we were discussing hometown holidays. It's kind of hard to believe that the planning for Christmas has already begun. I also attended a nonprofit connect meeting that was led by Chandy Beckham. It's where nonprofits get together to collaborate and help promote projects, discuss issues. And there's also an educational component to the meeting as well. I, I'd like to thank Dana Curry for coming to visit me yesterday. He brought me some literature on a group called Light Sports. And they are an organization using the platform, the sports, to share the gospel. And this group actually worked this weekend to clean up the Carl Luton Stadium or Rock Stadium. As you can see, it looks very nice now and even after they got everything cleaned, they actually played, played some ball out there. So it was nice to know that they had taken that time and, and everything to do the work out of Rock Stadium. We also had a, well, actually, I do want to encourage everyone to attend the meeting on September 24th because that is the opportunity to learn about the proposed changes to the historic reservation guidelines. There will be a lot of information there that you won't get at a normal council meeting. And because they, it's, it's going to be quite a process, it's very important that you're educated on those changes. So I do encourage each of you to attend that meeting. And then finally, I'm happy to report that we finally received our permit to proceed with the installation of the Maple Leaf sculpture on the Roundabout by Casey's. I think we've been working on that for a couple of years. And, but finally, I think we should have, we hope to have it completed before Maple Leaf. That's all I have.
Thank you. John?
Nothing tonight, Bill.
All right, we will now move on to reports, claims presented against the city.
Yes, Your Honor, I make a motion, we approve the claims for Yes, Your Honor. I make a motion. We approve the claims for 9/9/2025 for the amount of $925,339.05.
Thank you, Ron. Normally, the clerk will read the claims and then you make the motion to accept. But you did a great job, so I'll second his motion.
All right.
Okay, I got ahead of you there.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'll talk to Derek about that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Claims accepted. Now move on to whole business.
Council Bill 2559 and ordinance to amend Section 202 Drug-Free Workplace in the Personnel Policy Manual of the City of Carthage.
Any discussion? All right, cast your votes. And Gennaro, you'll...
Do a thumbs up or a thumbs down.
Well, um...
Oh, my dear.
Council Bill passes. Move on now to news business.
First reading of Council Bill 25-44, an ordinance to amend Section 200 General Employment Policies of the Personnel Policy Manual of the City of Carthage by adding Section 208 Employment Records Policy.
Any discussion?
I would just like to thank the Committee on Insurance Audit and Claims for working on this, and I've looked at the language, and I believe the language is very good. I believe, you know, we had some concerns the last time this came before council about protecting employee rights, and, you know, I believe that the language that we have in there now is acceptable. It should be protect the employees and yet still be able to get the council the information, if that information is necessary, get the council the information they need.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jack?
I still have concerns and an actual question. Why would a council member want to have access to personnel records? It doesn't make any sense.
Your Honor, we discussed this for four different committee meetings, and Mr. Gold helped us in getting it to this point to where we felt that it was going to be acceptable to the majority of the council, but we figured it's time to get it from the committee into the council. So if the council as a whole had any comments they wanted, we could get it going and get this resolved. We need to get on with our business with the city, and this is one of the things that's kind of holding this up.
Okay. Any other comments? John, would you like to comment at all?
This, even though Ron mentioned four committee meetings, this really started about a year ago this time, so it's laid around a long time, frankly. And the, the push was that there might be an instance where council might need to review a file. And we certainly were, as the mayor said, sensitive to employee privacy and not having their information leaked. So in, in trying to come up with maybe a hybrid or something that met the competing concerns of no access versus access and being mindful of the privacy of the employee themselves, this is what we came up with. And basically, we've added that the council has the right to see a file as a body as a whole, not just one council member coming in and asking for access. And if that request is made, and we've got a provision that says it's to be made by filling out a form, that would trigger an automatic closed session because any personnel matters would be protected under the sunshine law and that we, we needed to discuss it in closed session. At that closed session, if a majority of the members present vote that it does pertain, based on the stated reason of whichever council member would like to see the file, if they vote that it pertains to the care management control of the council, of the city, then the HR director would present the file for review as a whole. Again, this is to try to prevent one council member, two council members, just wanting access because they want to look at somebody's file. It needs to relate back to care management control of your charter in Section 3.1, best the mayor and council with the care management control of the city. And in my view, that also would include personnel matters. So that's what we came up with. That's what we have, and that's what's presented tonight for your vote.
And tonight is first reading, so there's, if you still got questions, certainly tee them up with the, the other members of the Committee on Insurance Audit and Claims who drafted the language or assistant drafted the language. Any other questions? All right, next council bill?
First reading of Council Bill 2560, an ordinance to amend the Personnel Policy Manual of the City of Carthage, Missouri.
Any discussion? This is the whistleblower language, as everyone, I think, is familiar. Okay, next council bill?
First reading of Council Bill 2561, an ordinance to authorize the mayor to apply for federal financial assistance on behalf of the City of Carthage and to execute any contracts resulting from such application for any grants between the City of Carthage and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, providing for capital, operating, and/or marketing assistance comprised of federal funds to be expended for commission-approved transit projects.
Any discussion?
So I, I would just like to say that for a city the size of ours to have a city taxi is, I believe, a very valuable service that we provide to our citizens. We have, as far as I know, we, we did have like a morning route that gave employees at Innovative Industries rides to work. Then we had a lunchtime route that picked up senior citizens and gave them a ride to the senior center and home from the senior center. So the, the taxi is more of a service to our citizens than it is really a means of getting somebody from one side of town to the other. It's really to provide a service that benefits those riders in a way that they may not be able to afford or may not be able to, to be able to realize another form of transportation. So I just think, you know, the state and the federal government, they keep changing, they, you know, one thing for sure about government, they're going to change regulations, and they keep increasing the regulations. And so I hope this grant application gets approved. This is just to submit the grant. It's not to accept the, the grant. I hope this grant application gets approved so we can get that money, so we can continue that program.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, yes, Kate?
First of all, my husband Jerry rode that van to the senior center every day for lunch, and he benefited greatly by that because I was managing a flower shop for a year and a half and couldn't really take care of his lunch. And I think that the city taxi is a very valuable thing. I intend to use it myself. So.
Thank you.
I'm all in.
Any other comments? All right, next council bill?
First reading of Council Bill 2562, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Terra Foundation to perform a water delineation study on the South Economic Development Park land that consists of roughly 246 acres or $5,500 in the City of Carthage, Missouri.
Any discussion?
Mayor, this is basically a study of the water going from the south side of the city and circling down to Center Creek and what happens there. And it also sets a process for later on development if needs so.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Next council bill?
First reading of Council Bill 2563, an ordinance amending the annual operating and capital budget of the City of Carthage for fiscal year 2024 to 2025 for the fire sales tax fund.
Any discussion? Tracy?
I, I just want to point out on this, it is a result of a year-end adjusting entry. The client was actually purchased last July, I believe, so it has, it's just a result of the adjusting entry.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Next council bill?
First reading of Council Bill 2564, an ordinance amending Chapter 17, Article 7, Section 17-257 of the Carthage City Code.
Any discussion?
What is it?
I'm sorry?
What is, what's Chapter 17? So it, it's... Mr. Mayor?
Alan?
Yeah, so it's actually the section that deals with the Chapter 353 grants that we passed a couple of years ago that allows the city to, or planning and zoning, to actually declare property blighted. That property then becomes eligible for that 353 grant is what Mr. Mayor spoke about earlier. And, you know, one of the things that, to remember is that blighted is a very vague term, and pretty much any property can be deemed blighted for any or no reason. So it, it's not, doesn't mean that we have a bunch of houses that have to be torn down or anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other qual, questions, discussion? Okay, thank you. We have no mayoral appointments tonight. We'll move now to closing comments.
Do we have that in the packet?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry?
The mayor's appointment of Gennaro Cuentas to the Committee on Insurance Audits and Claims and to the Public Safety Committee.
Any discussion? All in favor? Yeah, Alan?
I move that we accept the mayor's appointment of Gennaro to the Committee on Insurance Audit and Claims and Public Safety Committee.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yes, he needs to have these jobs.
All right, cast your votes.
Actually, this is just a voice vote.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, congratulations there, Gennaro. You've got some work to do now. All right, now we'll move on to closing comments. My only closing comment is this. This Thursday, September 11th, is National Patriot Day. It is a national day of service and remembrance for those that were both lost during the 9/11 attacks in 2001, as well as any and all of our service providers doing great things for us on a day-to-day basis. And that runs the gamut from the police department, the fire department, to our teachers, to everyone else in that industry. So I ask all of you to take a moment that day and, and say thanks and remember those that we lost. Other than that, we will now move on to council closing minutes. So Alan, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, Gennaro, I said earlier, welcome again. During my time on council, that Ward 2 seat has been open more than any seat on this council. It's been lovingly referred to as empty chair, but now it's no longer empty chair. Welcome again, Gennaro. Just want to say, Carthage Tiger football is rolling. Josiah's boy is an animal out there, and let's keep up the roll on Carthage Tigers. Looking forward to going this week up to the Missouri Municipal League Conference. That's always a very interesting conference. We get to network with council members, aldermen, mayors, different people in different government organizations across the state and have some informative breakout sessions that we get to go hear some good educational information on. So I'm looking forward to that, and that's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Shanna?
I'll also be attending the MML conference. I'm looking forward to that. I have another subject that's kind of off what we're speaking about, but it's about say something, if you see something, say something. And this week, yesterday, it was reported in Tacoma, Washington, Pierce County, that they thwarted a school shooter. And the school, the, the person that they managed to get is 13 years old. He hadn't been in school for four years. He had, when they investigated his home, he had all types of guns that were made on a 3D printer. He had magazines loaded with bullets with writings on those to go back to a school, and the school that he would have gone to is the one that my daughter teaches at. And it was only because somebody said something that this was stopped. So if you see something on social media, if you question anything, we've had 91 school shootings in this, the United States this year. That's two a week. It doesn't have to be that way. So if you, it's so important. He had pictures of other school shooters on his bedroom walls. There were all kinds of signs to lead to this, but it, it was stopped. So just be, be mindful, and that's it.
Thank you. Ron?
Again, I appreciate that because offense is much better than defense. After it happens, it's too late. You've got kids in our schools. We've been lucky here so far. I don't think we've had a shooting at our schools. I think they had one incident where they had to walk down to school, but other than that, we have been lucky. But if you see a problem on Facebook or social media, speak out. It's better to have the, the chief and his people to go and check it out than having to react to an accident or an incident. So I appreciate that comment altogether. And that's all for tonight, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Kate?
I agree. If you see something, say something. That's the best defense.
I know.
Kate? Ray?
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Jack?
Well, I don't know, but I want to give a shout out to our neighbors in Webb City. Logan Van Wyde pitches for the Houston Astros. And when he first came up, the Houston announcers spent numerous, numerous minutes talking about Missouri Southern State University, first player to ever play in the major leagues. So I just want to give a shout out to our friends in Webb City and particularly to the Van Wyde family.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, that's good.
David?
I'm happy to see Rock Stadium got some love over the weekend. It's, it's a big part of the city, and it needs to be appreciated. As far as Patriots Day, we all need to remember we're all Americans. We need to remember all, almost 3,000 people was killed that day. Ron and I, we didn't know at the time, but we were at the World Trade Center a little, less than a year before that happened, you know, at the top of World Trade Center. And when you were there and then see that happen, it's hard to believe that kind of building could come down, but it was a horrible day. That's it.
Thank you. Beth?
Thank you. Welcome, Gennaro. We'll be in touch so we can go to some meetings together, and that way we'll learn from each other while we are talking to the various folks that we want to touch base with here in the city and the community. And I, too, think it's really important to honor Patriots Day and in terms of the things that happened. I think, you know, sometimes there's a lot of people now who weren't even born when that happened, and it's, it's still in our memories, and it was quite devastating. But I think, and also that goes back to, it's all right until it doesn't happen, and then it's not okay. So that to see something is really important when you think about just a young life that is snuffed out because of somebody's really sick mind that needs a lot of help and can catch them beforehand. So, but at any rate, I just, again, welcome you here. And also, I got a call from Dan Curry today, too, so excited. He said, I know you don't care anything about baseball, but I really just want to talk to you about how grateful we are that the stadium got cleaned up. And he said they're uncovering some things that may relate to some of the history of the earlier, the very beginnings of the stadium, which could be things that he wants to look at. And I just think that's, that's the kind of thing that I think will bring the community together by trying to share in somebody's joy. And, and I do care about baseball, but he didn't know that, and I thought it was great that he called anyway, just because he had something good to say and, and is sharing it. So it's fun.
All right, and you, yes, Alan?
Aye.
I'm down. Are you going to make a motion, or no?
Oh.
Oh, okay. I was going to make a motion to go into closed session according to Section 610.021, possibility to close the meeting, to discuss hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting a particular employee by a public governmental body, and personal information about the employees discussed or recorded.
All right, we've got a motion to move into closed session. This does require a roll call vote.
You second it?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. So all in favor, roll call vote.
Aye. No. No, it's not on mine.
And we're ready?
Yes. All right, motion going to closed session is approved. We'll move upstairs.
Session of Carthage City Council back into open forum. The Clerk please call the roll.
Gielpin? Here. West?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
Moon?
Here.
King?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Sharon?
Here.
Segwens?
Here.
Here.[1778.90][1778.90](Laughter)
Well.
West. Sorry. Sorry.[1782.60][1782.60](Laughter)
All right, we're back in section. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I have a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you ladies and gentlemen for your evening.
I promise to take my wife.